We're a little discombobulated for those of you who've been waiting. I appreciate your patience. And welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting slightly behind our time, meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for July 11th. For those of you who, first of all, if you have a phone with you, now's a really good time to turn it off. I'm going to do mine. And if you have something you want to talk to us about, you'll find a form like this out on the desk in the hallway. If you would fill it out for us, that would be really helpful, just for us to keep track of who's here and who wants to speak and our paperwork later for getting in contact and so on. For those of you who maybe don't make this trip every two weeks, how this works is we have a little bit of sort of miscellaneous items to take care of here at the beginning, which we'll go through pretty quickly. And when we get to the items to be heard requiring separate votes, we'll call each of the applicants up to give us their name and address and tell us what they're here for. We may have some questions for them. We may talk amongst ourselves. If there's anyone here to speak on that item, we'll ask them to come forward and do the same thing, give us their name and address, tell us what it is they want to say. And then we'll vote on each of those in turn. First item of business is the receipt of the minutes, and these are the minutes of the June 13th meeting.
Motion.
I move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the June 13th meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Would you cast your votes, please? They are received. Continuance requests, we have several.
Three uncontested continuances. There are Item 25, CE 996, defer to August 8th. Item 26, V 18, defer to September 26th. And Item 27, PC 10 592, has been withdrawn.
Is there anyone here today who thought they wanted to be heard in any one of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 25, 26, and 27. Would you cast your votes, please? Those items are continued.
We have two new requests for continuances. They are Item 19, that's SP 534, defer to 822. I believe Eric wants to speak to that.
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. The staff has requested some additional information on this item, and it will take us a little time to get it ready. So we would like to continue until the second, Thursday, in August, and we'll be back at that time. If that's agreeable.
Second Thursday in August.
Twenty-two August, I think it is.
Twenty-two. Is there anyone here today who wanted to be heard on that item? If not, will you read the other one for us?
Yeah, we have one more. Item 22, SPUD 1126, defer that item to August 22nd as well.
Is there anyone here today who thought they wanted to be heard on that item? If not, I'll take a motion on both items.
Motion to defer items as read.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 19 and 22 to the dates recited. Would you cast your votes, please? Those items are continued. We have a number of items on the agenda that are relatively routine in nature for which we have not received any protest and which we feel have a sufficient likelihood of approval, I guess, that we're willing to vote on them in a block. The consent agenda, if you'll read that for us.
Okay. The first 10 items are on consent today, and that's Item 1, CE 997, to close an alley north of Villa, northwest 2nd. Item 2, CE 998, application by Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority to close some streets and alleys located around 6th and Stonewall. CE 999, application to close a five-foot utility easement at 10 921 Northwest 26th Street. Item 4, CE 1000, application by Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust to vacate a 20-foot alley located east of Broadway and south of Oklahoma City Boulevard. Item 5, CE 7082, final plat of Estates 1 at the Hennessy. Item 6, CE 7083, final plat of the Heavens. Item 7, CE 7084, final plat of a replat in Quail Creek, Section 40. Item 8, CE 7085, final plat of Skyline Trails, Section 5. Item 9, CE 7086, final plat of Manners 1 at the Hennessy. And Item 10, CE 7088, final plat of Galardia Residential Community, Section 10.
Is there anyone here today who thought that they wanted to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
I made approval of items 1 through 10 on the consent docket.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve items 1 through 10. Would you cast your votes, please? They are approved. So, next portion of the agenda is items requiring separate votes.
First item for individual consideration is Item 11. It's SN 088. It's Consider a Resolution Changing the Name of California Avenue Between Joe Carter Avenue and Charlie Christian to Kings of Leon Lane.
This is an item which I know that the mayor would like to speak to. If he has any voice left.
It's now my time.
It now's your time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. David Holt for the applicant, 200 North Walker. That's a joke. I feel it is ironic that I'm here in front of you because I feel now I have to personally apologize for extending your day. But thank you for your service and thank you for your patience, specifically today with that long meeting. So, I know Janice was here when we did a bunch of musical namings back about a decade ago. I can't remember everybody else's term of service. But even before that, we did, we kind of took the approach, and I say the royal we when this all started, when I was in college or something. But we, as a city, took the approach of starting to honor famous Oklahomans. My preference is always famous Oklahoma Citians, but it started with famous Oklahoma athletes in Bricktown, as you're well aware. And when I came along and was working with Merrick Cornet, we did a series of musical namings. It had all been sports until that point. And so in that period of time, we did Charlie Christian, we did Flaming Lips, we did Wanda Jackson, we did Vince Gill. And all of those were Oklahoma City, had Oklahoma City ties specifically. Also, we chose, and I know this is the technical side of it that you'll appreciate, we always chose either alleyways that had never been named or stub streets that did not interfere with, you know, the traffic management of the city too terribly much. Time goes on. Over the years, I've been, you know, I'm sort of been involved in city government even in that interim when I was at the state legislature, and was getting the feedback through the years that people thought it was time to honor Kings of Leon. And I want to also say here that this is never as much for the honoree as it is for us, and I think that's really important to say here. Kings of Leon will live a full life, just as the Flaming Lips and Vince Gill and Wanda Jackson will, with or without a name. It's really about, and I think this goes for the sports namings as well, it's really about letting people know in Oklahoma City and visitors to Oklahoma City that, you know, you can be anything you want to be growing up in this city. It's supposed to be inspirational. It's also helpful to Bricktown's visitor economy, as people like to take their pictures with these signs, and they like to come and visit them if they're fans of that particular artist or that athlete. So in that concept came the Kings of Leon. So Kings of Leon, the members of the band, several of whom, they're all relatives, but several of whom grew up in Oklahoma City, they've talked about that through the years. They have been good citizens of our city, even though they no longer live here, and that's usually the case with famous athletes and musical artists. But they returned proactively when we had a tornado five or six years ago and held a benefit concert. And then, as you know, since, actually, since the initiation of this application, we announced that they'll be opening Scissor Tail Park with a concert that will be free to our citizens. So that's not entirely coincidental timing. We would like to have this through the process by the time that that concert happens, and we'd like to dedicate it. That's always a fun part of this process, is to have that public dedication. I wasn't my first rodeo, so I checked in with Mrs. Powers and Kamal and Councilwoman Nice, and in fact, also the property owners along this particular street who have public-facing businesses, most notably the Brewers who own the Event Center and the gentleman who owns the IHOP. Because, you know, I'm sensitive to that, you know, I know that their address will change, and especially again if they have a public-facing business. And they were, all of those people that I just mentioned were either fine or supportive of the concept. So that's kind of where we're at, and I would be happy to take any questions or comments and take it any which way you want to go. And of course, on the south side of the street, that's city land. So you certainly have majority ownership support. Not that I think a city-initiated name change requires that, but it's nice to have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of honor? Is there anyone else here who thought they wanted to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
I am wholeheartedly in support, and I move approval of Item 11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 11. Would you cast your votes, please? And it's approved.
Thank you again, and thank you so much for your service. Appreciate you all very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Item 12 is PUD SP 1584B. It's application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1584, located at 8400 North Oklahoma Avenue.
Is the applicant present?
I'm not as tall as the mayor. Good afternoon. Tim Johnson here on behalf of the applicant. If you've seen the paper recently, you've seen that a new sports venue is being proposed up on 9,000 Broadway. It's called Chicken and Pickle. Pickleball's become a, I always thought it was an old-person sport. That's why I could play it.
You know, old age is always 25 years older than you are, so.
But anyway, so this is their site plan and landscape plan. They've opened successfully three other locations. This nestles in the overall development. So this is Flix, this is DeLisi's headquarters, everything in green is the entire development. And they're going to sit right here, north of DeLisi. And they have, it's a very, all buildings are four-sided, architecturally four-sided, improved. It's printed really dark, but it's a gray finish, very modern. A lot of interior landscaping, as you saw in the landscape plan. They create areas that you can sit and watch other people play, you can have a beer, you can get your chicken or sandwiches or whatever that you choose. And a lot of the play areas are, they have roll-up doors, you go inside, and you play the game inside. But their sign meets the PUD, very simple sign. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Would you hold back up the site plan?
Pardon me?
The, just the project site plan?
Yep. So this is north.
So the, sorry, the, on the far right, the courts shown on the far right, those are interior to a building?
They're enclosed, yes.
All right. I was trying to find that on here, and then I, that's what, never mind. I'm good now.
So this is, everything here is open patio seating. They have a couple of outdoor play game areas for like shuffleboard and bocce ball, but all the main pickle courts are enclosed.
Even the ones on the top of the sheet? Because I can see those on my site plan, right, but I can't see the others.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're right. These are open.
Those are open, yeah.
That's enclosed. This is the enclosed building. And then this is their patio area.
Yeah, all right, cool.
My question is about, and first of all, I have to admit that I don't know what pickleball is, but my question was about the secondary, I guess in the part that talks about the accessory signs, and maybe this is standard, so maybe this question is better directed at staff, and I just haven't, I just don't remember this, but it talks about the sign area shall be that area in which actual letters are located. The remainder of the sign shall be considered background and not count towards the sign area calculation. So does that mean that we're only, we are, the PUD only covers the letters, so any other background, we can't control the size of it at all? Just the letters? Is that what that means essentially?
There is a limit to the height of the monument sign. And we're within that, but the staff comment has to do with the standard sign language that covers the letters of a sign. I apologize.
There are more signs allowed in the PUD than the sign just for this restaurant. There's some total project signage, where you would have one large sign with all the different projects' names on that sign. And on that, then we're just going to count the lettering of the sign. And that's fairly standard in the PUD.
Got it, okay.
Where this language kind of comes into play most often is oddly enough with like neighborhood signage, because neighborhoods, you put up these wonderful big brick walls, and they put their names on it. And the way the sign code used to be interpreted, the whole wall was the calculation for the sign.
Okay, that was what I was thinking.
So, I mean, that's how that kind of came to be a thing. Do we have any questions? Is there anybody here today that wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of Item 12.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 12. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved.
Item number 13 is PC 10 595, application to rezone 12,000 North Council from the R1 District to the O2 General Office District.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Thank you for your time today. Stephen McHaleb with the Dairy Berry Navy Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Singh. This particular property is located at 12,000 North Council Road. It's on a major thoroughfare, as you can see from the map. We originally applied to have it rezoned from R1 to C3. After meeting with staff, we decided to go with O2. There has been no protests filed, and the staff recommends approval. And further, in the staff report, it says the proposed rezoning to the O2 District is consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the surrounding area. With that, my client, Mrs. Singh, is here today. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. McHaleb, I note that there is some portion of this site that's a riparian area. We can't control that within an O2 zoning, but it's also fair to say that you cannot develop within the floodway, is it? So do you have any sense of how much of this site is consumed by that requirement?
I think it's, and Mrs. Singh, how many acres of the property are in the flood zone area, if you're aware?
I think that we, that we, like, on the council road, I would say very little, but we don't get that much at all. There are capable, but last fall, we never had any obviously.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that.
She said that, she doesn't know, she said very little of the size is affected by the flood zone area.
But that will nonetheless be a requirement that is enforced at building permit stage?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
You said the staff suggested to you that you switch it from C3 to O2?
Yes, sir.
How come?
Because it's not at an intersection.
Not at an intersection, okay. All right, but you guys are good with that?
Yes.
Still allows you to do what you want to do?
Yeah.
Is there anybody else today who wanted to be heard on this item? If not, and if we don't have any other questions, the applicant, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval on item number 13, PC 10595.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 13. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you for your time.
Item 14 is CE 7087, final plat of Rockwell Memorial Retail, located south of Memorial Road and east of Rockwell.
Good afternoon. Barry Lodge with the Grubson Consulting, representing the applicant for the final plat at Rockwell Memorial. Have TEs 1, 2, and 3. 1 and 2, we have no problem with. On TE number 2, we would request that you would entertain and approve the variance to leave the access noted as a private drive access and utility easement as currently shown on the plat.
So I always have a little bit of a concern or question about these. We don't need any separate notice for the variance, do we? And after visiting with staff, I think they are of the view that that is the better way to deal with this, to, rather than to require the change, the shared access that would be designated as common area. They think that the variance is the better way to deal with it. I'm sure they could speak to that if anybody has any questions about it.
I think probably my question can be answered from the applicant. So the access drive is going to run, this is where the 7-Eleven is now, south of the 7-Eleven, right?
It's on the south side of the 7-Eleven.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, right by it. Okay, so this, there's a building being constructed there directly south right now. Is that a car wash?
I think it's a car wash, yes.
So this is south of that?
It'd actually be on the north side of that car wash, in between the, in between the car wash and the 7-Eleven building, on the north side of the property.
So what, this access would be from where 7-Eleven's entry is now?
I think there's a, there's the 7-Eleven access, and then they have, I think they've erected, they've already constructed the driveway entrance that would be along the north side of this property. So it's not the actual entrance into the 7-Eleven, you know, where you pull in and go into the store and the gas pumps. It falls south of that.
How close are those curb cuts? Those have got to be really close together.
Well, I don't think they're as close as you might think. And I apologize, I don't know the exact distance on that, but I'm making the assumption at this point that that has been approved, since they're building the building, that the location, that driveway, met the requirements.
Yeah, I'm just having a hard time. I'm trying to picture, because like I said, I drive by it every day. I'm just, I was just trying to make sure I saw where this is going to be. But that, basically, that private drive is going to provide access to both parcels?
Yes, it'll provide access to both parcels.
All right, through the front and the back, and it runs east-west. Okay.
Yes.
That helps me.
Anyone else? Is there anybody here today that thought they wanted to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the variance to Section 5.4.2, E1 of the subdivision regulations. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the variance of the subdivision regulations. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Make a motion to approve the final plat, item number 14, CE 7087.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of Rockwell Memorial Retail. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item 15 is SPUD 1128, application to rezone 4025 Southeast 59th Street from the SBU 260 to a SBU 1128.
My name is Lynetta Smith, and I'm here with Kobach LLC.
Tony Scorsone with TCS Construction.
Richard Starks, their architect, with Prairie Rock Architecture.
We're here today to ask for approval for a property which is located at Southeast 59th, between Sunny Lane and Sooner Road. It's currently SBU 260, and they split the property into two sections, and we are purchasing the SBU 1120, and we're wanting to build a building that is 6,000 square feet. There's currently a max on the building at 3,000 square feet. So the only change that we're wanting to make is to increase the building size from 3,000 to 6,000.
And are you okay with the technical evaluation?
Yes.
Outdoor sales.
There was an error on the, on the master design that indicated we wanted, one of the uses was outdoor sales, and we will not be, that was an error, it shouldn't be on there. So I'm going to have to make a correction with the city planning.
Okay, so this is a point about which I want to be very clear. The technical evaluation relates to a modification of that language. I would like to have that use just removed entirely. If you do not need outdoor sales or display, then I'd like to just remove that use entirely.
Correct.
And then I have kind of a question, I guess more for staff than anything else. In the information about the signage, I don't see addressed EMD signage, non-accessory signage. Is that because it's already addressed in the SBU, or what's with that?
I believe they had already addressed it in 260, and we were just going to follow the same approvals on that one. Do you remember? The monumental type sign?
Four-foot high.
Yeah, that's what was already approved. It was a four-foot-high monumental building out of the material that matches the building.
Does it, does it speak to EMD signage or non-accessory signage? That's what I'm curious about.
No. The previous one didn't either.
The previous PUD was approved before the EMD regulations, so we may just want to specify that EMD and non-accessory are not allowed.
And are you okay with that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So.
An EMD sign is an electronic display sign that does motion graphics.
Mm-hmm.
And a non-accessory sign is like a billboard that advertises something that's not on the property.
You're saying that's required?
No, we're saying we want to make sure that those aren't permitted.
Oh, no, okay, okay. That's, I agree with that.
So we can make sure that language is included as this moves forward?
I'm sorry, you understand that under your existing SPUD, that you have the right to do that now, and that you're going to give that up in changing this language. I just want to make sure you understand what's going on there.
You say we have the right to do that now. I wanted to keep everything pretty much the same. We don't need it, but if we sell it, I want to keep the, keep everything the same to help keep the property value maintained. So I'd like to just keep everything except for the size of the building the same.
Your application was really just about, I mean, essentially, SPUD 260, SPUD 1128 mirrors what you had before. You're simply asking to expand the size of the building. If that's the only change, is that correct?
Correct. That's the only change I want to make.
Okay. This, to me, I was just going to say that, to me, this seems like a fair
I was just going to say that, to me, this seems like a fair trade-off. I understand what Commissioner Cravens is getting at, but you have a need. We, we would like to potentially ask that you, in, in asking for this larger building, that the trade-off be that we get your existing zoning closer to the way that we try to manage property at this point, in regards to signage.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that you, as a property owner and a member of the public, understands exactly what you're doing when you do it, before you agree to it. So as long as you're okay with it, that's wonderful. But if you're not, this is the chance to have that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Well, while we're having that discussion, I'll just say, I cannot support this application if it includes EMD signage or billboards. We approved a P U D just to the west for duplexes in 2018, and this would not be an appropriate placement for that, so.
Okay. Yeah, we, we accept not to have those, those types, the billboard or the electrical signage. There's none in that vicinity, and it really wouldn't even go with the, with the area. That area is turning into more of an industrial-type area, and we won't have customers coming directly there anyway, so we really don't need that type of signage there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Is there anybody else that wanted to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll move to recommend approval, subject to the technical evaluations, and the second one we added regarding EMD signage, billboards.
Okay, so just to be clear, that we're going to remove outdoor sales display and outdoor storage as a use?
Yes.
And we're going to make it clear that there's not EMD signage or non-accessory signage billboard on the property?
Correct.
So Commissioner, TE number 3 goes away, because we're removing the use unit altogether from the application? Just.
Was there a TE 3?
8300.54 is the use unit that's being stricken.
Yeah, TE 1. Then just add the other one, EMD sign.
Are we good with the motion?
Sorry, I believe we do. We have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Yeah.
Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Item 16 is S P U D 1129, application by Casey's General Store, rezon 11311, southwest 44th Street.
Good afternoon, Brad Reed with Craft and Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant. This S P U D is to allow for Casey's General Store, which is a gas station, to go on 44th and Mustang. We allowed the uses that they would need for the gas station in this, and there is a 1TE cross-access to the property, the north and east shall be permitted. We are fine with that. They're working on a cross-access agreement with the seller who owns the rest of the land, and so we're, we're fine with the staff comments.
Excuse me. Kent? Is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
No second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 16. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 17, S P U D 1132, application to rezone 5200 North Grand Boulevard, from the R1 Single Family District.
Good afternoon, my name is Razwan Najmi, 4108 Northwest 143rd Street, Oklahoma City. We have a piece of property here, this is R1 district. This was an ODOT excess land, right by Hefner Parkway, and this was bought over, and it was initially assumed that since everything around it is O2, this would revert back to O2 with the city staff. The city staff later said that when ODOT acquired it, how many of a years ago, this was R1, and it would go back to R1, and then we started the process of getting it rezoned, and meeting with, with the commissioner, we decided that S P U D requiring an O2-based zoning would be the best way to move forward with this. As you can see in the site plan, this is a peculiar trapezoidal shape of land. It's kind of a wedge with the widest area being on the northern side, and that's where we proposed to put the building, the southern side serving as a parking lot. And hence, that's why we asked for those variances, or setback rate variances on, on this building, so we can fit an appropriate-sized building on there. The one thing that I wanted to clarify, and, and I did talk to Ms. Powers about it yesterday as well, was the building height requirements. I think as per the building, as per the code, the requirements are, if you are at least 75 feet away from an R4, and there's nothing else that is residential around it, there's an R4 right across the street, then if you're more than 75 feet, there is no building height limitation. I wanted to confirm that is the case in terms of what the, the measurement is. Is it from a property line, is it from a property line to the building, measured linearly, or is it from property to property? And that was something we, we couldn't come to a final agreement on when I, when I talked to the city staff, so that is, that is one thing that we would need to clarify in terms of understanding. The city said, go per the O2 height requirements. That was the recommendation. And I just wanted to make sure we are, we have a minimum number of stories, and if it's two-story, that project doesn't make it feasible to build it. So that was the only clarification we needed at this point, but apart from that, if there are any other questions, I would be willing to answer.
When you and I talked, we discussed removing two items from the list of uses. One is the automotive parking lot as a principal use.
Yes, I agree.
And the other was a high-impact institutional limited to a hospital.
Yes.
And, but we also did talk about this issue of height, and after discussing it with staff and looking again at your site plan, one of the things I think, you know, if, if you were, what is it, 10 feet further south from where your site plan shows your building, you wouldn't have any height limit. And so, you know, I don't want to redesign your thing for you, but I also would note that the way traffic flows along Grand Boulevard, you will not have the opportunity for traffic to come to 52nd and go back around into your parking lot. 51st, which exists, it has been vacated, so at any point, they could choose to close it off.
Yes.
And so you might, you might want to take a hard look at your building placement and how you've got that worked out, especially perhaps in view of the first technical evaluate, I guess there's only one, isn't there, technical evaluation, with respect to shared
That was a parking, yes.
Cross-access. So if, 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 what is driving your building placement is your parking arrangement?
Actually, the, that's where the maximum width of the lot is. That was the ideal location for us to put a building. Any other place, as you move further south, it, it narrows down and doesn't really give us a feasible building size. But I did not really understand your comment on the closure of 51st. How does that affect us in any way?
Well, so as, as traffic is trying to reach you from Independence?
They would have to come off of 50th.
Right. And I mean, currently, currently, they have the option of
Yeah.
Coming down 50th.
Yes.
And, you know, it's true that we wouldn't really want to encourage traffic along 52nd, but what you're, what you'll be limited to basically is Grand Boulevard, and it'll have to come north from 50th.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, does anybody else have any questions?
So are we clear on the height?
I, I just wanted to find out, the way we sit right now, we are at 76 feet from the R4 zoning across the street. The building is 76 feet, which is more than 75 feet that the court calls for. Are we good?
Yeah, if you're, if you're from the R4 line
To the building line.
To the building.
Be good.
So from the edge of the R4 property, or the edge of the building on the R4?
From the R4 property.
So you're okay? That sounds, that works?
Yes, it's a 60-foot right-of-way, and then we are 75, we are 15 feet inside the right-of-way, so we are at 75, yes.
So yeah, that's something you're going to want to be really careful about.
I agree. That's, that's one of the things I wanted to clarify, but yes.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody else here today that wanted to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Since the chair can't make the motion, I'll help her out here. So I just want to make sure I got this right. We're going to leave TE number 1 intact, and we're going to strike use units 8250.10, high institution, high-impact institutional, and then 8300.13, which is automotive parking lots as a principal use?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so I'll make a motion to recommend approval.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, before we do that, one last thing.
Yes.
And you have indicated that electronic message display signs will be permitted in this S P U D?
You wanted that removed, I'm good with that.
We discussed that, and, yeah, yeah.
I, since we are back here, what does the TE evaluation, the one that says about parking requirements may be satisfied by shared off-site, or what does that actually mean?
If, you know, the parking lot that's adjacent to you to the east, if you were able to enter into cross-access
With mercy.
And share parking agreement with them, then you, you would be able to count that as part of your parking requirement.
Okay, okay.
So it's not restricting you in any way?
No, no, no.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, try again, sorry.
No problem. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of S P U D 1132, striking electronic message display signs from the MDF, from the master design statement, subject to TE number 1, and striking use units 8300.13 and 8250.10 from the master design statement.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 17, subject to the conditions and limitations, Rad. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 18, S P 533, application for special permit to operate a moderate-impact institutional use, high school, grades eight, nine through 12, located 1119 Southeast 66th Street.
Uh, 5500, North Grand Avenue, speaking on behalf of We're Architects.
So tell us what it is you're asking for, please.
So they are moving in, we are moving in, or designing a, redesigning the old Toys R Us, that's across from Crossroads Mall, to accommodate a charter school for high school students, conjunction with a science academy. And so the special use permit, I think right now it is retail, it wasn't old Toys R Us. So the special use, we're asking to be able to remodel the interior of the building to accommodate the students.
Um, Commissioners, do we have questions? Like, you know, clearly the mall area is, shall we say, in transition and be kind about it?
Yeah, and I think the Toys R Us has been involuntary, the redone, I mean stripped, or
Right.
They took everything out of it, had to board it up. Be a good, good to have something there, for sure.
If we gave out awards for the best application of the day, you would get it. Yeah, this is great. I mean, what a great adaptive use of an old big-box store. As a real estate person, I love this. I wish you great luck with it.
Thank you.
This is a great reuse of this property.
Thank you.
I echo the same thing. I, I would like to say, because I feel like we haven't seen this yet in Oklahoma City, what I would love to see, what I would love the, the owners of the property and, like, kind of writ large to consider, is redeveloping the edges of it, and there may be some housing. It's a lot of parking for some of the uses that are going into these places. It'd be great to see these kind of start to densify a little bit, just a thought.
Is there anyone else here who wanted to be heard on this item today?
As far as the access road or anything, do you have any plans to change it, access? It's at that intersection of Crossroads and 66th.
No, there aren't any plans to change any of the access to the, to the site. 66th, looking at it. That should be adequate for parents coming in, dropping off kids, turning around, and leaving again.
Okay. I, you'll have, there'll be an issue with that light, and that's probably something that appealed to traffic, too. That light stays green for all of about two seconds. It's timed off, I mean, I guess it's there every morning.
Well, luckily, you know, most of all that stuff now is so digitized that they can change things like that.
Right, and they did. They fixed it for about two weeks, and now it's back to where it was before. There is some strange wires hanging from it, that may have something to do with it.
Okay. There were a couple of statements in the staff report that, that gave me some puzzlement, but I, I don't think that we need to go into all of that here today. One of them has to do with the possible need for mitigation on-site for noise, dust, traffic, et cetera, caused by the industrial uses. I assume you have all that well in hand.
Yeah, and, and part of it, I mean, so it's supposed to be, P U D 1685 is supposed to be a, some sort of batching plant? Is that correct?
I think that is right.
Okay, so we're not, not really sure, from my standpoint, I'm not really sure what kind of batching plant's going to be, how much dust is going to be produced. Right now, we do have the, as far as, we will have on the, what side is that, the west side, we will have opposite from that, we will have all the outdoor activities sheltered by the building. As far as noise is concerned, interior to the building, they are, they are insulating the entire interior walls, the interior walls with sound insulation to, to mitigate exterior noise infiltrating into the building.
Okay. Commissioners?
I have one thing regarding the traffic light. Introduce yourself to that gentleman there in the second row.
I will. Very good. Thanks.
Anybody else? Nothing? Okay. I move for approval, recommendation, or, yeah, actual approval of a special permit, 533.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 18. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, really.
Thank you very much.
Item 20, S P 535, application by the City of Oklahoma City for a special permit to erect an emergency communication tower, 14200 Hogback Road.
Afternoon Commissioners, Kerry Wagner, IT Public Safety. We are currently replacing our, our citywide radio system. As a, part of the process for that, as we were planning for it, we, of course, met with the different customers that we have, police and fire, and one of the things that they commented on during that time period was that they have some issues with subadi transition in the far northeastern portion of the Oklahoma City area. And so as a part of our planning for this, and the specifications that we put out, the recommendation came that we add one more site, that that one site be recommended area was for the fire station number four, for that particular requirement. Any questions about that, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Just sort of a, a very general question. Did you think at all about other sites?
We did. Of course, the recommendation from the consultant, and then the recommendation that came back in the design from the, the vendor that, that got the, the contract, both wanted to use that site. There was, there is a wastewater treatment plant in the general area out there, but it's at a lower area. at a lower area elevation-wise than that particular one. They were gonna put up a, a small tower to, as part of their SCADA data system, and so we looked at the possibility of, would it make sense for us to move to that area and do everything with the one, with the one tower? But the analysis that took place on that said, no, you'd have to go up to three-hundred-and-fifty foot to be able to get the coverage that you needed over the ridge out there if you go up that lower elevation, and so, that's why we stayed with the fire station four site.
So, is it a line-of-sight thing? It's, you've gotta have?
Well, it's two things. One is, we need the elevation to get over the elevated ridge that we get into in the far northeastern portion of the city, and then, of course, the terrain out there also. But there is a line-of-sight issue with regards to the microwave backbone. So, we have, we have thirteen sites. We're reusing all of our other tower sites that we currently have, only adding the one site, and it has a new higher-capacity microwave backbone in it that's already been put in, with the exception of the linkages to that one site. We have to have the height in order to get the line-of-sight from the microwaves that connect it together.
So, to be able to implement that with only the addition of a single site is really pretty good, isn't it?
Well, we were, we were happy with that. That was one of the, one of the targets that we gave to our consulting team, was to try to design this in such a way that we wouldn't have to build more than one potentials.
Thank you.
I know that we had some letters of protest. Do we have anyone here?
We'll get to that.
I just, before, I was either gonna comment, or I was gonna wait.
Either way.
If we've got people.
If you want to hear from the protesters first.
Yeah, I'm gonna wait.
We can do that. Do we have any questions of our applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this, and I don't, I know you talked about that ridge line and the line-of-sight and all that. I don't see any topography on the site. Is this the only place on the site where this can go? I mean, you have a five-acre site.
Well, we asked about the potential to put it back to the east side of that building, and evidently, that's, that's a septic area for the fire station, so yes, that was the only place on that side.
That entire east side is septic field, drain field?
What we're told.
Well, since Nate brought up, that's kind of where I was gonna get into. What about the south side? Are we out of room on the south side?
I believe we're, I don't believe we have any area on the south side of Fire Station Four.
Is there a, with the caliber of guns that you will be firing? Long guns, short guns?
Guns?
Oh, this is not the gun range.
Wrong.
We've continued that item.
We're on item number twenty.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Does this tower have guy wires and legs that come down? Is it a freestanding tower? No, it's a freestanding tower. And I believe we included a statement from an engineer showing that it had, like, a one-hundred-and-fifteen-foot collapse.
And even though that's true, they still measure the distance of separation from the actual height of the tower, right?
Correct.
So.
What all does this tower do?
We have what's called a simulcast radio system for all our city users and many of the jurisdictions. We actually provide radio service for many of the jurisdictions in the area. It's called a simulcast system, which means that it transmits on all the sites at the same time, which gives us maximum coverage and, and access to it by police and fire, public works, utilities, and other jurisdictions, including Oklahoma County Sheriff.
So, that's the, that's the reason you said getting it up high, so it can be above, I mean, there is a really, I mean, the topography out there is more intense than I think a lot of people realize.
Absolutely.
But getting it up high like that in that area is what allows it to reach those other towers, and I'm just trying to make sure I understood it, and then that's what prevents you from having to put another one somewhere else, because the reach wouldn't be as far.
That's exactly correct, and that's why we can't reduce the size, or the tower height.
Sure. So, if, if I may, this tower, how far away is the nearest tower as a result of you being able to build it in this particular spot? What's the nearest one besides this one?
It's on Santa Fe, just south of, of, south of Memorial.
That's a long way.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good distance. Okay. All right, that helps me, thank you.
Absolutely.
Do we have any other questions of our applicants?
I just, I'm kind of with Asa and Nate on the, if it doesn't have guy wires and you don't have to put dead men out in the middle of a pasture somewhere to secure the tower, then we're only talking about a base of, what, twenty feet around and twenty feet deep? There's an equipment shelter that goes with it that is. Okay. And that's. So, the back east corner of the five acres of the property can accommodate that? And I'm anticipating what the protesters are gonna say is, you know, I don't want to stare at a tower looking out my kitchen window either, but if all you have to do is, and I'm simplifying this, dig a hole and put a tower in, then digging a hole here, digging a hole here, and setting a construction trailer, equipment, building, I mean, I'm in the radio business, so I kind of know towers. I'm with Asa, why can't it move to the back of the property as opposed to where it's at, or is the topography of the back of the property considerably lower where it would have to be taller, or? I don't have the answer for you on that. We didn't, I didn't go out and step off that, that area. This was the area that we were, that was, were given, and I asked about the east side of the, of the facility, and was told that that was septic, and that we couldn't put it there. So, I'm not familiar with the specific area that you're talking about. Okay.
Well, I'll be honest and say that I didn't drive out to this one. It is a little bit far for me, and I thought we'd be able to talk through it here. I'm looking at it on a.
You're really asking for a bike check. You know that bike.
It's a, it's a long ways to bike. I'm looking at, I just, I really think maybe, along with, you know, the line of comments here, I know what the protesters worried about, too. If it's gotta be on this site, I just want to make sure that we, the city, are doing our due diligence to make sure that we are limiting the impact to the neighbors. I mean, we've got a south side and a west side currently, that one's vacant and one is a booster station. And if we don't have to put this next to our neighbor, I think we should be good neighbors and make sure that we're, we're verifying all the way that we can't put it somewhere else on this site.
Those properties may not be ours, though, Asa.
Well, if you go, I mean, so there's a site survey that's in our packet. Did you guys see that? And, I mean, I think that's where the questions are coming from, is the, the septic lines are not showing that they would be interfered with, the lateral lines are not showing they be interfered with by, you know, moving it. There's some propane tanks that are showing on the site plan, but to his point, the southern boundary of the city's property where it could place the tower is really limited. I mean, it's essentially the backside of that fire station. So, but there's, there's a pretty wide-open area in the back that doesn't seem to be interfered with, with any of those, those items. So, there's gotta be a reason, because I don't think, I mean, to Asa's point, I don't believe that the city went out and said, how can we be the worst neighbor possible? How can we locate this tower in a way?
Absolutely not. In fact, we thought we were being a really, we thought we were doing a really good job in, in putting this out in a double-A area and reusing space that would be out there. And unfortunately, there is a tremendous amount of work that we have to go through with the FAA, with the State Historical Preservation Group, with the tribal reviews and everything, that is several, several months long. And so, obviously, we do what we'll have to do, but, but that would set things back considerably if we have to go back and re-engineer, re-engineer this and go through all of that process again.
I think what we're asking for, probably, rather than re-engineering, is just an explanation of how you came to choose this particular spot, choose this particular spot. And if you don't have that information, how would you feel about continuing this and bringing somebody who can explain it to us?
I'm at your mercy on this. Certainly, we would prefer not to continue it because that will, because the project is, because of the point at which the project is in, okay, in terms of the schedule and what's depending on us being able to start putting this up. So, any delay would be difficult for us, but if that's what the decision is, and that's what we'll, we'll do. I asked the question about whether or not there was any other place on this site that we could put it from our fire department, and they said no.
Okay.
Could we go ahead and hear from?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have one gentleman signed up to speak, one not gentleman signed up to speak, Dorinda McCullough.
Hello. Committee.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dorinda McCullough, and I live at one-four-three-zero-zero Hogback Road. I live just north of the fire station.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll do respects to the man speaking. If this tower was being put beside his house, I don't know that he would approve. This is a large encroachment on our home. The tower is two-hundred-and-fifty-foot. My husband and I moved out to Luther in two thousand and eight to live in the country. We've lived there eleven years. We've worked very hard to make our home and property beautiful. We moved there for space and privacy for neighbors and to live where we can enjoy the land, beautiful trees, nature, and the kind of peace and quiet that only the country can provide, encroachments. Within two years of moving to our home, the fire station was built next door. The state opened up an interchange to the turnpike on Hogback Road, which is convenient, but has increased the traffic dramatically in front of our home. Approximately five years later, DCP took by intimate domain a portion of our property for the private pipeline to carry liquid natural gas to Texas. This has affected several property owners in our neighborhood, and now a tower. It's really hard to gauge what two-hundred-and-fifty-foot looks like. There are no trees or buildings that can hide the tower of this magnitude, and will have a negative visual impact on our homes in our neighborhood. We treasure our skyline, our stars at night, peace and quiet. This is why we're living in the country. I have a hard time realizing how tall two-hundred-and-fifty-foot is, so I pulled up online. I don't know if you're familiar with the Union Plaza skyscraper on northwest Oklahoma City. It's two-hundred-and-fifty-two feet. That's eighteen floors tall. I know this isn't a tower, but this gives you an idea how tall this is. If you're more familiar with the Continental Oil Center downtown, this is two-hundred-and-sixty-two feet. It's twelve-foot taller, but if you would stand at the base of it and look up, that's how large this tower is. We have a lot of wind turbines here in Oklahoma. Wind tires located in Harper and Woodward Counties. These turbines are two-hundred-and-fifteen, and thirteen-foot tall from the center, from the ground to the center of the blade hub. These are seven, thirty-seven foot shorter than this proposed tower. Dangers of the tower. Your proposed interstatement for safe distance from our home is three-hundred-and-twelve feet in case of catastrophic failure. This does not include the safety if we were on our property. We have an outbuilding, a shop, small garden, vehicles, driveway, majority of our front yard and our south side of the property would be in an area less than three-hundred-and-twelve feet. We did not purchase five acres to only use a portion of our land. We should have to not worry about finding the safe zone on our property due to a tower. A failure would result in property damage, injury, and possible fatalities. Towers do fall. March two thousand and fifteen, tornado destroyed two towers and broke a third one in half. This was in War, Oklahoma. To me, they have given it a much larger buffer zone. These towers were taller, and I don't know the construction that they're proposing, but still, they do fail. Lightning strikes. Antenna towers attract additional lightning strikes. Over the last, over the past thirty years, new technologies, especially cell phones, has increased the number of antenna towers in the United States more than threefold. Advancement in broadcasting technologies also assists with the development of a, of the National Lightning Detection Network, NLDN, a web of one-hundred sensors that can detect electronic, electromagnetic signals emitted from lightning strikes to the ground. Within seconds, these towers transmit data, transmit data on a local, on location, time, and polarity, positive and negative electrical charge of the lightning strikes in the global database via satellite. To test the accuracy of the current lightning measurements, a research group from the University of Oklahoma in Norman, Oklahoma, the heart of this storm country, mapped twenty years of NLDN, cloud-to-ground lightning data, in a grid space into five-hundred-meter cells. The research found that nearly all, ninety-nine point eight percent of the grid cells, with more than a hundred cloud-to-ground, cloud-to-ground lightning strikes records within a kilometer of an antenna tower. Kilometers is point six-two miles. Registered with the Federal Commission, Communication Commission, they found the taller the tower, the greater likelihood of cloud-to-ground lightning strikes occur. Most past studies examine limited geographies and seasons, both of which significantly affect the lightning frequency. The research, however, decided to cover a wide range of locations and dates. For example, they found from September to February throughout the northern Great Plains, the frequency of all cloud-to-ground lightning strikes near a tower was a hundred-and-thirty-eight percent higher than a region two to five kilometers away.
Ms. McCullough, I appreciate.
I'm sorry if I've told you too much. I just.
I appreciate the information that you're giving us. I think probably the level of detail is a little bit more than we're able to absorb around the horseshoe.
I'm sorry.
But, don't apologize. However, I take your meaning. You're concerned about the safety of the tower for various reasons, and I understand that. Was there something else you wanted to tell us?
I wish they would consider moving it further away. There is probably within a mile, three, two towers on Hogback Road. I don't know if it has to do exactly what it has to do with, they're talking about height. There is a portion right out front, right next to the fire station. I don't know how big that pad is, but it sits right there between the power pumping station and the fire station, right there. I don't know that they even looked at that, or if they feel like it's too close due to power lines. There are other places on that property if they have to put it on that property. My neighbor just. My neighbor just built a $430,000 home right across the street, and that's what she gets to look at. I know that doesn't mean much to you, but it means a lot to us.
I don't know why you would say it doesn't mean that much to us. I think it means probably a lot to most of us sitting here. I think -- I don't have anybody else signed up to speak. I think maybe now would be a good time to check with the commissioners and just see, given sort of where we are and the amount of information that we have at the moment, are we comfortable voting on this item today? Or do we feel the need for some additional information about why this is the place this tower needs to be, if in fact, that's the case?
I'd be curious why it can't be in the far southeast corner or over there. I mean, looking at this survey, it doesn't -- I mean, I don't see anything. I see something close to the building as far as the septic line and that, but I don't see anything. You know, maybe there is a reason, but--
There is a difference in elevation. There is.
I think, obviously, you've become well-prepared today. I think you gave us a lot of great facts, and I think we need a larger burden than to just say, "Well, they said we couldn't put it there." I need to hear something that says absolutely -- I need more info.
And do we all feel that way about it?
I have more questions about it. I mean, one, I'd want to know before we go back, I want a clear explanation, which I think can be answered today, about the approval process once again and just outlining it from a timeline perspective and how they clearly -- how they reached this conclusion about where it had to be. Then the other thing that's really important for you as the representative for the people in your neighborhood is honestly, if we move it from that location to, let's say, the location that Commissioner Privet had mentioned and others have mentioned, further south, further southeast, does that matter to you? Or will you be upset that there's even a tower on the property altogether? Because to me, that changes the way that we have to approach it. If you're upset because there's going to be a tower, that's totally different than saying I'd rather you rotate it somewhere else.
Right. I mean, obviously, I prefer it to be down the road with the other towers, but, you know, I did go out and I spoke to the firemen and walked around and tried to look at different locations for this. You know, I think it has to do with the elevation, and it just -- they would have to spend more money to make the tower taller. But I'm just like looking at this as far as that. That's the line of sight of my house. It's the line of sight for her. There's a lot of sight for a lot of people, and they look down that road. And that's just real -- that's really close to the road. I don't know if you -- I mean, it's real close. I was out there with the measuring tape, so, looking at it. And further back in the back part of the property would be less -- you wouldn't notice it as much. Of course, you're going to notice a 250-foot tower. But would it be smack dab in your face? It would be less intrusive if we have no choice. Does that make sense?
Anybody else?
I understand owning the property, the fire station the city owns, and it's a good move on our part to not go buy new property to put a tower on. But until I learn why it can't move into the back corner, then I would not be for this application. And if it's all it is, is digging up a couple of lateral lines and moving them, then that's not a good reason either. That's simple stuff. I mean, a couple of hundred dollars' worth of simple stuff, so.
So, if you'll excuse me, Mr. Wagon. Given the feeling of the commission about sort of where we are, how confident are you that you can produce somebody on -- is it August the 8th? Who can answer our questions?
Well, I absolutely will.
I think that's probably where we are then, and I'll take a motion.
I move to continue item 20 to the August 8th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to continue item number 20 until August the 8th. Cast your votes, please. It's continued.
Item 21 is C7080, final plat of Quail Lakes Office Park, located south of Northwest 150th and East of May Avenue.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson, Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant.
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson. I'm sorry. Ms. McCullough, you might submit the information that you brought with you today to staff so that they can provide it to us, and we can review it more at our leisure, and that might be helpful. It's a lot to take in while we're sitting here. But if you have information that you would like us to review, I suggest you provide it Thank you. I'm sorry. Please go ahead. I didn't mean to throw you off.
That's all right. I'm, you know, kind of -- who am I? So, we're here for this second phase of a plat that was preliminary platted and Phase One final platted a couple of years ago. This particular PUD was approved prior to the city adopting a new ordinance for traffic impact fees. Prior to that, this -- the prior PUD had a very serious traffic impact study done, as well as the one we did for 1577, because the concern of the neighborhoods around there was the amount of multifamily that was proposed on both those developments. In the second PUD that we did and the second traffic study that we did at 1577, we drastically reduced the number of units of multifamily or housing could be in there. We added some commercial uses. We added the office use that you see here, and we added personal storage uses, and all of which are a reduction in traffic impact. So, the concern was not as high when we did our second study a couple of years ago. Just real briefly, and I'm talking about traffic because it's TE number two, which I don't agree with. We can agree with one and three. I cannot agree with number two. Original, our traffic study that was done for the development, the entire development that was being rezoned, included all of these intersections that are in blue and had recommendations for full build-out. So, these things could happen if it warrants at full build-out. So, currently, one of those was the intersection of Saraneta and 150th Street, which is the street that goes out north, and there was a fatality there, and so the city used its funds to build a signal there. So, that signals in. There are other improvements. It's not like the intersections are unimproved. There are other improvements on all the other intersections. Most of the requirements that were added as part of our traffic study were adding additional lanes, adding a right-turn lane, and things like that. Nothing in that traffic impact study included anything that was specific to the interior of this development. It all had to do with development on the perimeter, on the section line roads. So, back to the comment of, we believe, our developers believe, that when, after our PUD was approved, and now the new ordinance for traffic impact fees, which the development community fought really hard against, but it's now in full force, and they're paying the fees. And if you watched City Council last week ago Tuesday, Eric Winger gave an update on where we are with those impact fees. The city has gone out and hired, I think, four or five consultants to study all of the benefit basins and have come back with recommendations. I have not seen those studies. I don't know that they're even available for the public yet. But in Eric's presentation, he talked about how many millions of dollars have been collected in these fees and that they're going to be applied as needed to section line road improvements. So, our developers believe that the fact that they've paid in for everything they've done since it was approved on this land, that that should apply to them. And in fact, when that was adopted, any PUD that was approved prior to that that required additional traffic studies, that should be deleted, in our opinion. Now, I was provided a document right before the meeting and haven't really had time to study it in any depth, and I don't even know who prepared it. So, but it talks about questions and answers regarding the traffic impact fee, and I'm sure it's a result of the continuance I took a month ago to have this discussion with the staff, which I tried very diligently, got no answers until I got this in my hand today. So, it's concerning to our developers. When I asked them, I said, "What do you guys want to do?" They said their comment, and I agree with, and I've shared this with you, Commissioner, that the plat doesn't really drive traffic. It's the uses that drive the traffic. And so, if necessary today, I would like to change TE number two to not be a requirement of traffic impact studies to be done as part of this plat, but to kick the can down the road to give me more time to maybe get an answer from somebody about what are we paying our traffic impact fees for if I've got to go spend $10,000 on a new study? So, that would be my recommendation, would be to request that that be -- that TE be converted to allow for at the next site plan approval. If we don't have it resolved at that time, we have to provide something to mitigate whatever this question is. And one last thing with regard to that. The general discussion and the first question and answer that's on this document on page one, it, you know, it goes on to the fact that, yeah, it's not a requirement anymore. After that was adopted, Planning Commission repealed the resolution requiring the developers and property owners to provide traffic impact studies. However, the resolution did not relinquish the authority of the Planning Commission or the Traffic Commission to require necessary studies such as traffic study or a signal warrant study. We don't disagree with that, but there's nothing -- there's been nothing done out here to require that. The staff report specifically only repeats what's in the PUD as the traffic requirements. There's not, to my knowledge, there's not been any wrecks. There's not been any fatalities. There've been three or four buildings, office buildings, built in the last three years out there. That's it. So, we question what's driving the staff making this requirement. I think it's just a -- it's a -- and the feedback I got from staff was that it was a reflection of, you put it, "It's in the PUD." If it's not in the PUD, we wouldn't require it. But then when I pressed the staff for comments on the -- or the impact fees, I was told that it was above their pay grade. And so, that's where I'm at. It's been a very frustrating 30 days dealing with this, and I've tried to get a meeting with Eric. Haven't had time to do that. Eric did collaborate with JJ and I over some emails, but I don't think Eric had all the facts. He was espousing more of these kinds of answers without the facts of this particular case, and he was out on vacation for the middle of that month, so.
Okay, so, stop me if I go too far wrong here, but I think a little bit of history is probably warranted. This area north of Quail Springs was, and I would be hard-pressed to tell you exactly when all that occurred. When was the original PUD?
We weren't involved in that one. It was maybe 2008 or '09.
Yeah, so, a long time ago. And the concept for the development of the area, it was a big-picture deal. It was going to be one of those town center deals where it was going to be live, work, play. There was going to be housing. There was going to be retail. There was going to be, you know, everything you'd ever want. It would have, really, you know, you can move here and live and not ever get in your car again. You can stay in this area. The area did not develop that way, and in fact, over the years, the multifamily component of that definitely predominated, and that became very frustrating to people who had bought into the idea of the big-picture town center concept. They were -- the concept was really popular for a while, and it was going to transform the city, and so this was going to be one of those. But it didn't happen. The multifamily predominated, and I should say, I guess, so when the original PUD talked about all of these improvements that would be foreseeably needed to the surrounding -- we're talking to traffic here, the infrastructure of all kinds. It was with that concept in mind that it would be, you know, a really sort of mixed use in capital MU. I mean, really, really diverse area. As the multifamily predominated, that became an issue, and there was kind of, I would say, pushback from the commission for there to be more of the retail and office and the other components. If it wasn't going to be all part of one big deal nonetheless, you know, there needed to be the balance. There needed to be the mix. And I think what has happened over the years is that as bits and pieces of that have gotten developed, it's the requirements have remained in place because the requirements of that original PUD are still out there, but the development has not matched what was proposed. Now, we've kind of come, you know, down and down and down to a development where even as there have been amendments over the years, it was always, I think, anticipated at the time they were presented that they would be much sort of bigger scale and grander than in fact, they are. You know, what -- how they are actually developing is relatively modest, and so the cost of those infrastructural improvements, as well as just the sheer scale of the improvements themselves, you know, has been really changed. I would say sort of trimmed away, trimmed away, trimmed away. Now, I think what the concern is, and one of the concerns about leaving this requirement, first of all, I absolutely, and, you know, I have had this conversation many times, I do not agree that paying impact fees relieves you of the need to do traffic studies. If it's warranted and needed, you have to do them, and we have the ability to require that. The question is, you know, is this an appropriate place for that to happen? I think it is frustrating, both for people who have lived through that history, for staff, to know that there are these requirements. They're out there. They're, you know, embodied in these PUDs. They continue to exist, but the ability to evaluate the necessity for them is being scaled back and scaled back. And so, the concern, very specifically, with leaving the determination to the specific plan stage, is that, you know, one guy on one lot who wants to build a Wendy's suddenly, you know, is told that, "And you need to fund the, you know, the traffic light and the, you know, right-turn lanes," and, you know, that's just not sustainable. So, but at the same time, it's difficult to know where that point is, you know? How can we, at this stage, determine the need for improvements if not through a traffic study?
And the traffic impact fees paid for Public Works to hire four or five traffic engineers to do those studies for each of the benefit districts. There's a study done for this benefit district.
But they're big picture, section line road, you know?
But it should point out if there are -- well, and all of these improvements that were repeated out of the PUD are on section line road. So, they're going to know if there's a -- if there is a adverse impact at May Avenue and 150th Street today, then it should be covered in that impact scenario. And every building we build, we're going to pay, because we're so far out there, they're paying the highest price. They're paying the highest fee. And they did put in a lot of infrastructure. They did fund a lot of infrastructure as part of the initial development, and it's been done, and it's paid for.
You guys, does your client own all of PUD 1577?
Yes.
How long have they owned it? Since the beginning?
No, when the other deal went down the tank--
When it went defunct?
Yeah, so about--
In '09, along with a lot of real estate projects?
Right.
They picked it up?
Right.
Okay. And they've owned it ever since?
Yes.
What components of it have they constructed besides this office plating you're trying to do?
They have not -- so, the actual owners of the property have sold each tract. So, the developer of the plat is a different developer than owns the property.
The developer of the plat is a different owner than owns the property? Okay. So, did they sell off these areas that have been developed as large-scale?
Correct. Correct.
Apartments? They've done that? That's been on them?
Yeah, they've sold those off.
Okay. And those were all constructed just because they were part of the PUD, didn't have to be platted, so they went, pulled the permit, bam, it's issued?
Correct.
Right, okay.
So maybe it would be helpful for us to have staff come and speak to us about their concerns and the requirement that TE number two represents.
Richard McCubbin, Traffic Management. Our comment on here was that provide the improvements that were required as part of the PUD, and the reason we made that, it was in the PUD, it was stated that these improvements would be done as part of this, and these, it's, like you said, it's a whole project. The study was done for the whole project, and so we're looking at the big picture, and the big picture is that you're adding more traffic to the area, and these were improvements that were included as part of the development of this project. So they were prior to impact fees. The apartments and all that are all in this area did not pay any of the impact fees because they were built prior to the ordinance, which came in first of 2018. All we want to know is what improvements are needed at this time as part of this project, because that's what their PUD says, if warranted, after a review. We just asked for a study showing whether the listed improvements are warranted.
Tim, how big are these lots?
They're about an acre. They're for a small office development.
And you've got, looks like 13, is that right?
Right.
And a common area that I'm guessing is retention or detention?
Detention.
Yeah. That's what the CAA is?
Yes.
So these are basically 13 one-acre lots?
Yep, for office use.
Give or take. And, okay.
And so is it possible, I mean, is it, do we have a list of the improvements that we are specifically requiring or that are specifically required for this development?
Yes, ma'am. There's installation of a traffic signal at May Avenue and Watermark Boulevard. There's a right turn lanes on all approaches at Northwest 150th and May.
How many approaches is that?
Well, there's four approaches.
Four, okay.
Right turn lanes on all approaches at Northwest 150th and Penn, which also four approaches, and we've recently received a citizen request in the last week or so for a right turn lane at Penn and 150th through the council office, and then construction of an eastbound and southbound right turn lanes at Northwest 145th Street and Penn, which is the east side of the development.
I'd like to make one comment in response to one of Richard's comments. He said that the apartments came in in 2018. Most of those were planned, and some of them were under construction. We did our traffic impact study in 2017, and we included that in our study. And at that time, none of these improvements on this list were warranted. They were listed as sometime in the future at full buildout, but they weren't warranted at that time.
So how much development has occurred in the original plan area?
The first phase of the office park, which has three small offices and then a bigger building that has a beauty school in it.
Tim, just, I'm staring at this map, is this on the far west side that affronts May, or where is that?
No, I'm sorry. It's the first-phase plat of our subject property.
Oh, that affronts?
Sarenti Drive Avenue.
Glad you tried to say it. Okay, all right.
So that was developed, I think it shows on my air.
Well, these improvements were also listed in the study that Mr. Johnson did in August of 2014 for PUD 1531 as well.
And they weren't warranted at that time?
No, but they were listed as needed.
So what has happened since the last traffic study? I mean, what?
This was built out, and there's an application for a car wash, right? Right here, sorry. There's a roundabout, right here. You approved a site plan approval for a car wash? You don't remember?
Yeah, okay. And so since the last traffic study was done, that is all the development that has occurred that was not included in the?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. This is difficult. You know, on the one hand, it's really hard to look at this list of improvements and say, "Oh, yeah, you know, now's the time, we've got to throw down the gauntlet and draw the line here, and, you know, we have to have all of these things done because of this." I don't know whether delaying it to a specific plan stage, what does that really gain you?
More time to get a solid answer from the staff of why the impact fees don't apply.
Well, I don't have a problem with that because I don't think they do, so that didn't help me.
I have a problem with it, I do. And I'm curious, I'd like to hear from JJ. So these traffic impact fees that are coming in, those were for the purpose. I wasn't there, so I only know what I understood from this memo that we got today, right before the meeting, and then what I knew beforehand. These were created to do two things: provide a source of funds to provide for traffic infrastructure, yes, and to provide for studies that the city thought were important, instead of dragging every applicant to this podium so that they could create a traffic study for every single development, which costs a lot of money and drags out applications. Is any of that incorrect in your mind?
Yeah, but the traffic impact fees were to cover more regional areas, like the section line intersections.
Which ironically are the improvements that are at issue here, so.
You have non-section line intersections that require improvements here that were a direct result of this development. So the section line corners would be eligible for the impact fees.
Like Watermark and May would not, is your point?
Watermark and 150th and May would not, Watermark and May. The others could probably be eliminated and taken care of with the impact fees.
But are some of those fees used to pay for studies of the traffic council in that area? I mean, that's kind of the idea, right?
Right.
And this is where, I mean, this is where I met on this. Where I struggle is, I understand why the city staff wants them, what I?
Excuse me, before you go forward, I don't mean to catch you off, but I want to be kind of clear about this. Sometimes when things happen at the same time, there's a tendency to think that they are related. At the time that the impact fees were adopted, the Commission suspended its requirement that every single development of a certain size have a traffic study done. But it wasn't because of the impact fees that we did that. It was because, as part of the process of developing the impact fees, we got an earful, as we had been always getting, but, you know, a more concentrated earful from the development community. So that happened at that time, but it was not any kind of a trade-off. It was not part of the process. It is not why there are impact fees, and conversely, the fact that there are impact fees is not why we suspended it.
Okay.
So.
And I'll go along with that. What I will say is, this is a fairly new commission by and large, right, relative to historical. I've been here a year and a half, I've never seen us require a traffic study at this point, 18 months in. I'd also say that last meeting, we had an application come through where we literally moved a street and wanted to, we were going to change, adding a road, removing, changing dead ends, and I don't require a traffic study being required for development of that scale. So I'm wondering where we draw this line, and I'll tell you, there's no question, there's no question that there are traffic improvements, I don't need a traffic engineer to tell me this, I live out here and I drive out here, that traffic improvements are needed in this area. We don't need the study. But to require them at this point to do that, I think, it does bother me, and it bothers me for a variety of reasons, but the thing I'll point to that I think is the most conclusive, at least in my own mind, is that these are 13 office lots. We're not proposing to build another 600-unit apartment complex, and what's really crazy, and I know this is what their concern is, and I sympathize with it, is that I'm sure the PUD allows more apartment complexes to be built. Is that fair?
More housing.
Yeah, they can come out and be built. What I'm comforted by in this deal is that they're going to have to come back. They're going to have to come back, and I don't think this is the point where you draw the line, and you look at these schedule improvements, and again, I'm no traffic construction person either, but you're talking about a very significant sum of money to do the improvements that are being outlined in this staff report for 13 one-acre office developments? That seems silly to me. I'm not an engineer. In fact, I'd love to hear Nate's comments on this, but that seems silly to me.
So I think the question is, the other side of that, is if this is not the point, and I wouldn't argue very strongly with you that I think it is, but if this is not the point, then where is that point? I mean, what the applicant is asking us to do is to tie it to specific plan approval. So then you're really talking about the one guy with the one office building on the one acre, and, you know, are we going to require him to either fund a traffic study to tell us why he shouldn't, or go put in these improvements? As you're trimming back, trimming back, trimming back, the amount of development that is subject to the requirement, then, you know, you're really laying it more and more and more and more into somebody's lap.
I wouldn't be in favor of requiring it at the specific plan phase. What I would say is, I think it's pretty clear that there are a variety of issues here that deal with traffic. Your client, who owns this massive piece of land that they ultimately want to develop or sell, is going to have to help sort this out, but I'm not convinced that a lot of this isn't an equal burden, if not a greater burden, of the city to help solve that problem, and this isn't going to happen in two weeks or a month if you come back and hear this application again over these 13 lots. So I guess what I'm saying is, what I would be in favor of is saying that this is not the point to draw the line, because the development isn't significant, it doesn't dramatically change the massive traffic problem that's already there. What I would say is that what we should do is we should encourage Mr. Johnson and his client and the city staff to come back and make a decision about what's required, so that when they come back and they want to develop anything else over here, now we have a straight answer from staff about whether or not a traffic study has already been performed on the section line roads and what it said, because that's an answer you don't have, correct?
Correct.
And whether or not a traffic study from them is appropriate for all of this internal stuff. It just, there's a lot here to unpack, and there's not a basis for a continuance, and there's not a scale of development here that merits. Am I off by saying this is a half a mil, what kind of, if you just had to throw a dart at the board on what we're talking about here in development infrastructure, what are we dealing with?
It's less than a half a million.
Less than a half a million? Okay, so.
It's some interior parking lots, basically.
So to be clear, you say you think that the applicant and staff should get together and sort of decide, and that before anything else happens. What does that mean? At what point, then, does this come back to us for a decision?
Well, the danger is that, I guess it doesn't. The danger is that they'd have to plat something else, or it'd have to be something else that comes forward, but, I mean, my point is, is that if they went and pulled a permit right now, without trying to plat this, to build 600 apartment units, could you do it?
Yeah.
You think you could do it, under the terms of the PUD? JJ, I mean, do you have any disagreement with that?
That's possible.
So we could, they could essentially do that now, we're going to hold them hostage over a traffic study and over 13 one-acre office lots, which arguably, by the way, reduces the density that the area could see.
I don't think that's arguable at all.
As opposed to an apartment complex?
No, I mean, I think it definitely does. I mean, I don't see the argument on the other side of it.
Yeah, well, to me, this is just not the clear place to draw a line, so.
Well, I think, yeah, as I said when I started, I think that's the problem.
Yeah, and I don't mean to monopolize, so I'm very curious if other commissioners have thoughts, but, I mean, that's my basis for supporting the application, is this is not the place. I think the city has an equal obligation here to engage and try to help figure out what to do to solve this problem, because it's not a question of whether we got a traffic issue at May and 150th. It's just, how do we fix it and who pays for it?
Well, it's a PUD requirement that we've got to address at some point. It's in the PUD, it's got to be either amended or deleted or?
It's ultimately going to be required.
At some point.
At some point.
But the requirement as part of this development, as opposed to the impact fee paying for it, is really the point that we're trying to get a resolution for. JJ and I differ a little bit on whether or not Watermark and May would qualify. Based on what I heard Eric say and how I read the ordinance, I think it is a qualified location to spend the money, so.
You gave me something during my spare time, because this is, I'm very curious to go, now I want to go learn about this and try to really understand it, but that's not, I can't do that from here, so.
And so, and just for clarification, we took a continuance a month ago so that we could hopefully not put you through this, and unfortunately, we didn't get to the end result, the client needs to move forward. And I reflect it back to what, you know, JJ made the comment on one of the previous applications about, this PUD was approved before the sign ordinance changed, so therefore, that doesn't apply here. Well, this PUD was approved before the traffic impact fees, so the question is, do we amend the traffic requirements out of the PUD? And that was a question that, in one of Eric's emails, he said, "Yeah, you'd have to amend the PUD."
To get them out?
Yeah, take them out.
See, I think that was probably.
And this isn't the only PUD. If you recall, there were hundreds of PUDs that had traffic impact studies, so.
And that wasn't something that just slipped our mind, it was something we decided not to do, so.
Well, to Tim's point, carving up lots clearly doesn't create a traffic impact, it's what you put on those lots, so if we want to move it to the specific plan stage with this first one, and give you some time to meet and get together and try and iron this out, I think that'll be fine.
It seems to me, and not being in development and not having as much expertise and experience on the Planning Commission as our chair does, it seems to me like we want to be fair to the developer and hold them to the same standard we have to others, because I did take to heart Commissioner Cravens' comment about us moving a whole street at what is undoubtedly a major thoroughfare in Oklahoma City, and I, again, I pride myself in not going north of 63rd very often, so I don't make it out to 150th and May very much.
I resent that.
But I have no doubt that there's a lot of traffic there, but it seems unfair to hold them to that standard. That being said, if Tim's okay with it, with punting, essentially, then I don't see why we wouldn't go ahead and move forward with that then, since there's not consensus any other way among us.
And by the way, there was a considerable amount of traffic study done over the moving of that street, but I take your point. And, well, so, does that sound like a motion? Does anybody else have anything they want to contribute?
I would love it, if, I mean, if you have anything to add, Nate, I'd be curious.
Well, I'm in agreement with both of you. I think the ask by the city is not proportionally asked by the developer. I think at this time, you know, I don't see a need for the full-blown traffic study.
There's no more discussion with that, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for C 7080.
Amending TE.
Delete, delete TE.
Amending the TE number two to provide for that at specific plan, is that how we're going to amend that?
Yes, agree to that.
Are you good with that language?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 21, amending TE number two to make reference to the specific plan rather than having that requirement imposed at this time. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
It is approved.
Sorry to take so much time. Thank you.
Sometimes it just does.
Okay, item 22 is deferred. Item 23 is introduce and set recommendation, public hearing regarding amendments to Bricktown Stockyards and the River Overlay Districts and Urban Design Overlay District.
And these are items that have, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Lisa Cronus, Department of Planning.
These are items that have been presented to us and that we've gone through. These are items that have been presented to us and that we've gone through at study sessions.
Study session in Urban Development Committee.
So, this is not the first time we're looking at these, but all we're doing today is introducing them and setting them for hearing, right?
Yes, and I will, yes, and hopefully, yes, I will speed through the presentation. So, small wireless facilities, well, to back up, so this is an ordinance that will amend various sections of the design review ordinances to provide for the review of small wireless facilities. So, what are small wireless facilities? They are cell towers, under 50 feet tall. They are specifically designed to go in, in the right-of-way, in urban areas, to increase coverage in more populated areas. So we haven't, we have approved several for installation in various, various design review areas, none have been installed, so I don't have a photograph of any of them. This is an image from an application showing the pole, basically what they, they're a pole, there's really nothing else to describe. They've typically been about 35 feet tall, although we, I believe we have approved some 50 feet, 50-foot tall ones.
We used to call them light standards, could we call them standards instead of poles?
Poles, we could, sure. And this is an image from another municipality, showing what they look like in the wild, as they say. So, why are we talking about them? Why have, has the Planning Department and Municipal Counselor's Office been working on this? Well, Senate Bill 1388 went into effect in November of last year. That Senate Bill, the intent was to increase the availability of cell service, which we, we all can appreciate. It established small wireless facilities as a permitted use. It established that they were allowed in the right-of-way. It did allow municipalities to regulate them insofar as the regulations were, quote, "reasonable and objective," and insofar as they also applied to any element of the streetscape. So we couldn't establish guidelines just for small cell facilities, but they had to apply to anything in the streetscape, anything else in the right-of-way. And it also established procedures and timeframes for how the cell towers would be reviewed. So, the, our approach to developing this was to establish these, quote, "reasonable and objective" guidelines. We wanted to provide for staff approval, because if the applications had to go to committee, we might exceed the statutory time limit. We wanted to encourage co-location. There are, there are various technical and business reasons why cell companies would choose to not co-locate, but we wanted to, to the extent we could, we wanted to embed provisions for the future in case it became more feasible. Co-location meaning that they could install on other poles in the streetscape, and install on each other's. Finally, we've done quite a bit of outreach with the wireless providers. We have been processing certificate of approval applications for the past year, and we've been process, in that process, we've gotten to work out what works for staff, what works for the cell companies, what both parties can achieve, and makes them mutually beneficial. So that's been a great help in developing this. Overview of the changes, again, establish language that would accommodate the review. We wanted to, because we're regulating, proposing to regulate the cell towers as another street amenity, and provide streetscape guidelines relative to that, we had to make sure all of the design districts had roughly equivalent streetscape guidelines. Then, and then, to, to cover some things we wanted to cover on the small cells, we needed to add additional guidance for all streetscape elements, and I'll get into that in a little more detail. So, this ordinance covers all of the design review districts, which are located mainly in the urban core, up and down the river, and then, you may remember, we have a new design review district up and down Lincoln Boulevard. So, the, the ordinance is, is quite long, because all of the districts are covered in different sections of Chapter 59. So, we're embedding the same information in multiple locations, and that's driving some of the length of the ordinance. But the, what we're, the new guidelines fall along three basic lines, procedural, functional, and aesthetic. So, procedural is, we're establishing that you have to have a certificate of approval, which is the approval that the Planning Department issues, where we're saying that so new facilities need a CA, replacements need a CA, but co-location, where it's possible, does not require a CA. And we're also saying that staff may issue CAs. Then, functional, the main purpose of, of all of the design review district guidelines is to ensure a safe and efficient pedestrian route. So, so we made it clear that the small cells are not exempt from maintaining that clear path, that the small cells and other amenities, that they can't impede passengers exiting from parked vehicles, and we also made sure there was clear headroom as people were walking down the street.
Can I ask you, if, if co-location does not require a CA, are you confident that you have all the mechanism that you need to make sure that these requirements are met?
That is a good location on, I mean, a good question. The, yes, because the existing poles are likely to be streetlight poles, which are already out of the clear pedestrian path, there are also likely to be traffic signal lights, and the, the, there's some functional and technical incentive for the providers to locate their equipment high up.
Okay, okay.
I have a question. What is hanging from the bottom of the thing at eight feet above a... My granddaughter on my shoulder is going to knock her off my shoulder. Is that an electrical component? Is that just a bar that comes out that something attaches to?
This, this require, there's already a requirement that awnings have to be at least eight feet, and this is where this eight feet is taken from, because the eight feet, in this context, applies to anything. So, a banner, an awning, or a piece of equipment.
A banner and an awning won't shock you, though.
I'm sorry?
A banner and an awning won't shock you. That's, my question is, what is on these things that's hanging at eight feet that could potentially be a hazard if I stick my hand up in the air? I can reach almost to nine feet, am I going to stick my hand into something that is energized?
No, all of, for the small wireless facilities, all of the components are inside the pole.
Okay.
Yep. But that's excellent question. Then, then, we are design review, so aesthetics are important. We wanted to minimize the visual impact of all of the poles by making them match each other, match the same material finish and color as other poles on the block. For example, in Bricktown and Automobile Alley, most of the metal finishes are black, and then in downtown, most of the metal finishes are anodized color, silver anodized color. So, three of the districts did not have as explicit of streetscape guidelines as the others, and those are highlighted, Scenic River, Stockyards, and Urban Design. So in order to talk about, then give guidance for the pedestrian clear path and other amenities, we had to establish more pedestrian guidelines in these sections, establish them consistent with the others, but again, they're, they're located in various places in the code. And so, again, we had to define pedestrian amenities so that we could include small wireless facilities in that definition, and again, give guidance on the clear path. Historic preservation is actually the next item on the agenda, but I'm going to cover it in this presentation. The historic preservation ordinance does not need updating, because the commission has adopted, by reference in the code, a separate set of guidelines, Historic Preservation, Design, and Sustainability Standards. That document currently has text regarding utility components and streetscape elements, and so we propose to amend it in order to cover everything that we're covering, and the ordinance amendment for the rest of the design review districts.
Lisa, have you made arrangements yet to have that document recorded?
I'm sorry?
On, on the title of all the properties in Oklahoma County yet? Have you guys solved that mystery?
No, I cannot.
Okay, thought I'd ask.
So, our schedule, staff has been working on this for about a year, in the past couple of months, we've taken it for recommendation from all of the design review committees, and that's recorded in your staff report. Then we presented it to Urban Development Committee about a month ago, and now we are here, hopefully, to continue on. So I will answer questions.
Do we have any at this point? That we haven't already asked?
So, we're asking that it be set for, for final hearing on August 8th.
So I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set down item number 23 for hearing on August the 8th. Cast your votes, please. So done.
Then also for item number 24.
Oh, we did both of them? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're two separate items.
I fell behind.
So moved.
Second.
I'm trying.
Do I have a motion and a second? Did we do both? Did the, did the motion include both?
The second motion did.
Those now.
Let's just vote again, and we'll feel better about it. I have a motion and a second to set down item number 24 for hearing on August the 8th. Cast your votes, please. And it's done. Thank you, thank you very much. Where are we? Is it my turn? Perhaps. Okay, so, items 25, 26 continued, item 27 is withdrawn. Do we have additional items? Planning Commission Committees, Planning Commission Members?
I have one thing. Whoever our development review subcommittee is, isn't there people serving on that? For the rewrite code stuff?
Yes.
So I, I wanted to share one thing. So recently, I had a client whose building was hit by a tornado. And back in 2010, after we had all those hailstorms, if you guys remember that, insurance companies started including provisions in their policy for cosmetic damages, for things like air conditioners and other things, and one of the other things that they've started putting in their policy documents is an exclusion for EFS. And every time I see someone come in with an application for EFS, I cringe, but because I try to maintain a high level of objectivity, I don't criticize them for having 70% EFS in their sheet, even though I'd like to, because as I recall, the code allows for that, right? It allows for that. I think that's something that, at least, I would offer up to discuss if we should continue. My fear is that over time, that building product particularly ages very poorly, and my fear is that we're going to have an incident like that, where a bunch of buildings get hit with hail and have a bunch of EFS damage, and guess what? There's no insurance coverage for it, because it's cosmetically excluded as a building material. And so now you've got a bunch of buildings all over town with a bunch of damage that nobody can fix. I just think having a material like that as a, as a component of design and construction that could be 70% of a building's, you know, exterior veneer is, it really bothers me. If the code allows it, I'm not going to pick on applicants, but I'm just wondering if that's something that realistically we could build into that rewrite.
Just because I have to deal with a lot of building materials, one of the things that I would remark to that is actually, like, a lot of the EFS that we currently have in Oklahoma City was installed, you know, a decade ago. You know, those are a lot of times the buildings we're talking about. And the product, it's been a dirty word in my industry for a while, but it's really advanced, and frankly, I think a lot of the issues that maybe, you know, that you're speaking to have been solved at this point.
You're saying there's better EFS?
I just think, you know, as a, I don't think it's a, to me, it's not something that I am necessarily interested in controlling. I think, I think whenever we make controls like that on a product that is subject to development over time, where, it's, it's like saying, well, you can't do stucco, we're, we're, or you can't do masonry, because masonry can sometimes, you know, spall.
But to your point...
It's all has to do with really, like, yeah, the manufacturer of that specific product, like, because there's a lot of people do EFS, you know?
No, and to your point, EFS is a brand, I just know people know what that is. But, the, stucco is not a brand, stucco is a building material, it's a construction type, right? Whereas EFS is a brand of a type of, essentially like, it's comparable to drive it.
Well, so to be specific, EFS as a material option, it's exterior insulating finishing system, so it really is a system, and a lot of different brands make an EFS product. And really, the assembly that we're talking about is where you sandwich in between, and I'm sorry to get technical, where you sandwich in between your substrate on your exterior and a cementous layer, stucco. When you cement in between those two things, you're insulation.
Yep.
And that's, that's all it is, a lot of different people make it.
Yep.
And so I, I would just hate to, like, exclude it writ large whenever there's a lot of different...
I, I agree, I think the way to do it is to define it more broadly, and to protect from building materials being an exterior component of construction, from being a material that is that susceptible to damage and lack of stability. I mean, you, you see things, you see cities regulate things based on, you know, the impacts of hurricanes and winds and things like that, to try to improve, earthquake, building codes improve. That would just be my remark, because like I said, I'd love to ask every single applicant to change that in their architectural element from, you know, 70% EFS to make them do 30, because I know, I know what's going to result from that. Because the code allows it, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there, but it just seems like something that we should think about, those exterior requirements for buildings, to try to improve the quality of them, and ensure, long-term, that those buildings are sustainable, because you're not going to see any historic buildings, you know, that 60 or 70 years from now that are made out of stick and EFS, I can tell you that, so...
You're not going to see many buildings at all that we're building these days.
I understand.
Looking very good, yeah.
Planning Department, Development Services Department, Municipal Counselor's Office. Okay, we're almost there. This isn't to be heard. Other business. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Motion second, on favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.